Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council Legislative Session this evening. Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Do we want to do the Pledge of Allegiance first?
Oh, thank you, and let me get going. I know we've got a long agenda tonight, I don't want to get ahead of myself here. First, let me back up and start with the land acknowledgement, thank you. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people, and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes, as they share this place and welcome other area tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original peoples since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strengths and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared lands of the Spokane people, and ask for the support of their ancestors and all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices towards Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all people. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now, Ms. Fister, if you call the roll.
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Councilmember Klitschke.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all councilmembers are present.
Thank you. We are first going to vote on our boards and commission appointments to the Spokane Bicycle Advisory Board, two appointments and two reappointments, Scott Gordon, Cole Swenson, Lauren Packburn, and Christina Ramirez. Any council commentary on the boards and commissions? Seeing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? That passes, thank you. Onto the consent agenda, is there any testimony? We have several people testifying on the consent agenda this evening. We'll start with Christine Quinn, John Alder, and Derek Azaro. I don't see Christine, is she online? Come on down, John, I do not see Christine Quinn. And after John will be Derek Azaro, and then Wendy Fishburne.
I'm John Alder, David Northeast Spokane. I'm first commenting on items three and four, that I hope these housing units will be those for those on fixed income, and the rent will hopefully be set at 30% of their income. As far as eight and nine goes, the solutions being offered there, I hope they are solutions that bring treatment and not jails.
Thank you.
Derek Azaro, supporting District One, and also the kids of Spokane. As I've said many times, stop giving Catholic charities money, they don't need your money, they've got millions. Take that money and send it to the organizations that actually are doing a good job with kids. Definitely don't give any more money to Jules Helping Hands, which is actually Jason Green. Jason Green is Jules Helping Hands. Julia Garcia is only the executive officer, so all money going to Jules Helping Hands is Jason Green. I've said, don't give him money, look at their tax returns, look at all that. He is the primary officer of Jules Helping Hands. He's the one filing taxes with the federal government. He's the one sending in all the information to them. And I've asked him many times to look at their tax returns, and also anything else that they're doing. So when you give, the mayor goes out this money and you have to approve it, I've said to you many times to take a look at that, and all the other providers, to make sure they're complying. This is money going out of our city, it's going out of your taxpayers' pockets, and let's start directing it more to the agencies that go out, go and help children and moms, and that don't give any more money to the ones who are just taking the money. A lot of these executive officers are getting far more money than they deserve. Jules Helping Hands, Garcia started off at $26,000 a year, she's up to roughly $83,000 a year. The more money you give them, the more money they raise. Same thing for Catholic charities, the two leaders get over a quarter million dollars apiece. Do they really earn that money? Think about it. He gets paid more than the mayor gets paid. They're living pretty high in Spokane on that money from the taxpayers' money. And you've just got a big raise in your taxes in the state of Washington. Senior citizens are being shoved out of their homes because they can't afford to pay.
Thank you, Derek, your time is up. Wendy Fishburne, and then Larry Andrews?
Now, on this consent agenda, this has also those interlocal agreements, correct? Okay, cool. Well, I'm Wendy Fishburne, and I want to celebrate the interlocal agreements. Please unleash an emergency response for addiction treatment, not housing. Housing isn't killing anyone, while fentanyl is requiring at least 11 overdose death EMT responses a day. Please, with that money, host weekly crisis meetings toward immediate allocation of resources, starting with a 12-day detox justice diversion strategy described by Judge Lifeman. This can be done immediately with temporary portables at Geiger for an adolescent and adult detox center. Zero tolerance for open drug use and camping, let's free the captives from addiction. All efforts should be directed toward funding of workforce and housing pipelines. On the other side of detox treatment, our incentive structure needs to be reverse engineered. We need efficient accountability, not duplication, so I'm glad you guys are talking about this. Thank you for collaborating across jurisdictions. We need all resources at the table for this crisis, but please remember that real collaboration means including people you disagree with. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Larry, and after Larry, Dennis Flynn.
My name's Larry Andrews. I'm a citizen of Spokane, and I have a business. And you comrades here, and I feel like I'm just a peon, okay? Need to cut funding to Jules Helping Hands, for sure. It's come to our attention that there's stuff going on that shouldn't be. And when you're putting money for the people that need it the most, and they're getting the least, that's the wrong thing to do, okay? And there'll be further evidence provided. But I too emailed every one of you about getting the money to get the drugs out of town, okay? Until we get the drugs out of town, we're not going to stop the problem. You cut the drug line, then we're not going to have the homeless out here like we have them. But we keep adding to it, and patting them on the back, and giving them more drugs, it's the wrong thing to do. And they're suffering. They're all suffering here. We've got to cut this out, we've got to get them off the streets, got to get them in rehab, and get them a job. And those that can't, we need to find a place for them. The streets is no place to live, it's inhuman. And it's time that we take the action, spend the money that we have in this city, and not look to the federal government to bail us out. We need to take care of our own people with our own money. And it's over time to do this. Please, 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 don't let these people go through this any longer. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Dennis Flynn, and then if Christine is in the house or online.
Council President, Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. The report of the mayor, 11.3 million, 8.5 million, 9.9 million, I'm sure you'd miss it if no one said it, I do not consent. But picking winners and losers with taxes just ends up perverting a market that otherwise would work freely to provide efficient services for everybody. And sending tax dollars to a preferred location is just going to result in something, even though you have good intention now, 10, 15 years is what it's going to take, and we're going to see the negative repercussions of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Again, last call for Christine. Seeing none, any council commentary?
I think you had called Wendy Fishburne at some point.
I did. She spoke, she spoke.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wendy, you were not forgotten.
Thank you, sorry.
Again, again, any councilmember bingo?
Yeah. So I'll say I'm happy that the ILA is coming forward, you know, on the coordination and administration of the, you know, the different things that are coming forward. We have a couple ILAs that are coming forward discussing how we're going to be interacting with the county on, the county and the other jurisdictions, about how we're going to be deploying homelessness dollars and opioid dollars and those kinds of things, and I think that those are all really good things. I think the thing that we still really need to be pushing toward, obviously, is a regional homeless organization, that is going to be somebody who can take the tens of millions of dollars that are coming into the city of Spokane, finding ways that we can best coordinate with the pieces that we have in the community, and eliminate some of the administrative dollars that are taken. So just so everybody knows, in government, everybody takes their administrative cut, right? So we get this money from the federal government, we take 10% off the top for administrative stuff, okay? Then we decide we're going to delegate all these dollars to an organization like Empire Health, who takes, you know, an administrative cut, and then they're going to say, okay, we're going to partner with Catholic charities, or, you know, Jules Helping Hands, or VOA, or something like that. They all take their administrative cut. By the time we get down to it with those dollars, I mean, you know, half of the dollars have gone to keep the lights on to pay salaries and all that kind of stuff. And so by us approaching it with an actual established board where the funding is going to go, you can eliminate a lot of the middlemen on there who are taking administrative cuts. And that's not to say any of them are doing it nefariously, that's not my intention of saying it, but currently, the way that we're deploying dollars is incredibly inefficient. For example, with our opioid dollars, just a couple weeks ago, you know, we got $600,000 worth of opioid money that we were going to put out into the community, or $500,000, excuse me. And of that $500,000, we spent $150,000 on a director to administer $500,000. And so when you're looking at it, 30% went to his salary, and very little is going out into the community, respectively. So I think it's good that we're increasing our participation, it is not a replacement in any way, and not in any way close, to getting a regional homeless organization going, because then we can actually switch collaborative applicants, we can do all kinds of stuff without having a bunch of middlemen receiving their administrative cuts. So I think this is a good step in some ways, but there's a lot more work to be done.
Any council commentary? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Consent agenda is passed, Ms. Fister.
Special Budget Ordinance C-36687, amending ordinance number C-36626, entitled in part in ordinance adopting a biennial budget for the city of Spokane, and amending it to finance capital needs in the fire department and declared an emergency.
We have one public comment, Sunshine in the house? I do not see Sunshine.
Sunshine from Spokane, Washington, I was born here. On the fire department, I support this. I think they're very prevalent, and I just wanted to come up here and just kind of support this because of how much I see them doing, and how much I see them going above and beyond. And I love it when I go to the park and I can see them playing racquetball and things like that, and I'm glad that they get that time to kind of, you know, de-stress and stuff like that. I'm just very thankful for what they're doing for the people in the opiate addiction part of our lives, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sunshine. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you, that's seven zero.
Ordinance C-36688, amending ordinance number C-36626, entitled in part in ordinance adopting a biennial budget for the city of Spokane, and amending it to increase a part-time employee to a full-time employee in the CARES program and declared an emergency.
We have two public comment, we have Derek Azaro, and then Larry Andrews.
What was this again? Because you changed a lot.
Ordinance three six six eight eight, and response to part-time employees.
Oh, I didn't sign up for that, sorry about that.
All right. Larry, do you have a comment on that?
No comment.
Okay.
No public comment.
No public comment? In that case, any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you, that's seven zero.
Ordinance C-36689, amending ordinance number C-36626, entitled in part in ordinance adopting a biennial budget for the city of Spokane, and amending it to replace damaged multipurpose armored vehicle and declared an emergency.
Thank you. Now we have Derek Azaro, and then Larry Andrews, and Sunshine Wigan.
This is the multipurpose armored vehicle.
Oh, yeah, that one I like. Derek Azaro, representing District One, and the kids of Spokane. Be kind of obligated now to spend the money, but you could not spend this money if you had a mayor and a council that actually supports law and order. This town is kind of out of control at this point. You've got armored cars getting T-boned, chasing criminals. You know, kids aren't even safe to sit in their home and play a video game without being killed by a third-time offender, and the list goes on and on and on. So this is one of those avoidable expenditures. The PD obviously needs it, I know in Logan Neighborhood, I can tell you that in one day, within hours apart, we had that vehicle in our neighborhood, serving warrants on one house and a shooting on the other. So I think they probably, at this point, maybe want to get in more than one, just in case it happens again. But you wouldn't need to spend all this money, like I said, if you had a mayor and the city council majority that does not represent District One or wants anything heard out of them. You can avoid spending money if you come back with law and order, not make the PD social workers handing out brochures. Their job is to enforce the law, that's their job, they're getting paid for. That's what they were doing at the time, chasing supposedly, you know, a shooter. But look at that, seven officers got injured in that vehicle, and also one of the K-9 dogs, a vehicle got destroyed in a neighborhood, because they were, there's no law and order in this town anymore. You're against it. You don't want law and order. You want people on the street so you can make money off of them. You want to keep taxing the homeowners right out of their houses, and the state now. So when are you going to wake up as a council? Your five to two vote is every single week. For four years I've come here, and I can tell you that I've witnessed every week, it's five to two. During the briefing, it was brought out that that is what you do, and that is what you do.
And thank you, Derek, your time is up. And then Sunshine is up after that.
My name's Larry Andrews, and I'm a citizen in Spokane, in District One, and I'm also a business owner in District One. And thank you, President Wilkerson, for allowing me to speak to the comrades here. The problem we have here is we're not enforcing the little stuff, and the little stuff gets to the big stuff, okay? And I just live two blocks from Rogers, and in the morning, before school starts, the traffic going by Rogers High School, I think the speed limit is 55, okay? And I ain't kidding you, it's 55, okay? Because they're trying to beat before the light turns on, okay? And I make that turn right at the school every morning, and I nearly get ran over, okay? Because I've got to go down to Perry and take a left, and they just about run in the back end of me, okay? And so we don't enforce speeding anymore, and we don't enforce the little stuff, like the cigarettes that go out the window that fill up the whole lot across the street from us. And then there's the big gulps and everything else. It's a pure lack of respect, and it needs to change. It never used to be like that 20 years ago here. And it was brought to my attention by one of the contractors that I used to do the work for here, and he came back, and it's been 20 years, and he just was fabricated the changes that have happened here. And it never used to be like that. We used to have respect for everybody's property and everybody else, and we need to get this respect back, and it starts with the little stuff. If we don't have a police department that can enforce the little stuff, how are we ever going to do the big stuff? Because it doesn't happen, because they know they can get away with it, they can go in the store, take $900 right off the shelves, and walk right out the door. You know, how does a business survive here anymore? I'm sure glad I don't have an open-door policy at my shop where they can come and go like that. Years ago, my dad worked at Sears, and he chased a person down three blocks for a $10 item, okay? Nowadays, the guy would be looked at like, well, what you doing that for? You know? That's what's got to change. And the $100,000 for the armored car, to me, I think I'd take a real hard look at what you got for 100,000. I would say it's probably more like a quarter of a million dollars. I don't know what you can buy for 100,000, you can only buy a pickup anymore for 100,000 dollars, if that. So there's something not right here, and I don't know what it is, but something's not right. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Sunshine, Spokane, I was born here. So I worked in a homeless strip over by where we actually store all our stuff like that, the armored cars and things. And what I noticed is a lot of them are outdated, or they have bumpers hanging off of them, things like that. And I think that, I think we deserve this, like, I think the police deserve that. I think, I don't know, like, I can't tell you how many times the police have came and fed me, or done nice things for me, even currently, like, even just tonight before I came here. So I just, I definitely support this. I don't like seeing our police in unsafe vehicles, and especially when it comes to armored car, I think that is a huge necessity to keep them safe, and I want them to be safe like they keep me. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunshine. Any council commentary? Seeing none, prepare to vote. I didn't clear it last time, one second, guys. And now, prepare to vote. Thank you, seven zero.
Ordinance C-36690, amending ordinance number C-36626, entitled in part in ordinance adopting a biennial budget for the city of Spokane, and amending it to acquire the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network. Ballistic Information Network and ClearCase software systems and declaring an emergency.
There's no public comment. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you, seven zero.
Resolution 2025-37, declaring leads online formerly forensic technology, Largel, Florida, a sole-source provider and authorizing the city to enter into a five-year contract for IBIS ClearCase approximately $356,963.20 without public bidding.
There's no public comment. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you, seven zero.
Resolution 2025-35, providing for the issuance and sale of taxable limited tax general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $6,800,000.
There is no public commentary. Council? Prepare to vote. That's six one? Or did we miss you, Councilwoman Klitsky?
She missed us.
Oh. Let me clear the board and shall we vote again? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Resolution 2025-0038, approving settlement with Krista Tripp, $400,000.
We have one public comment. It was from Sunshine. Do we see her out there in the foyer? I don't see. Oh, here she comes. This is approving the settlement for Krista Tripp.
Oh, yes. I definitely support this. She came here and she was pretty distraught. And I got to meet her and talk about what happened to her and kind of give her some loving support and things like that. And I do, I do support this. I feel that we do owe her this money, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Resolution 2025-39 is deferred to June 30, 2025 agenda. Ordinance C 36658, vacation of Leita place between Inland Empire Way and the Union Pacific Railroad as requested by adjacent property owners.
There is no public comment. Mr. Brown, were you prepared to say anything or you just on standby? Standby. Any council commentary?
Yeah, that's the comment I was going to make, is that, you know, some of our city employees are really, really, really committed to their jobs and doing a good job for the city of Spokane. Eldon Brown, obviously one of those. Eldon doesn't need to be here. He chooses to be here just in case, you know, there are questions from the dais and that kind of commitment should be honored. So, appreciate you, Eldon. Thanks, buddy.
Thank you. You have the commentary? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36681, relating to the, excuse me, relating to employee leave, amending Spokane municipal code sections 3.04, 0.01, 0.02, 0.04, 0.07, 0.200, 20.230 to Chapter 3.04 of the Spokane municipal code, repealing Spokane municipal code section 3.04, 0.030 to Chapter 3.04 of the Spokane municipal code and setting an effective date.
Thank you. We have one public comment. Dennis Flynn? Okay, thank you. Any council commentary? This is in alignment with state law. Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36683, correcting position titles in Spokane municipal code, Chapter 7.06, amending section 7.06.097 and 7.06.271 of the Spokane municipal code.
There is no public comment on this, council? Prepare to vote. Thank you. First readings?
First reading ordinance C 36679 regarding obstructing access to and unauthorized camping upon public property, repealing sections 10.60, 0.01, 0.02, 0, 12.02, 10.02, 10.10 and 10.11 and adopting new sections 12.02, 10.01, 10.07 and 10.09 of the Spokane municipal code.
We have several public comments?
Do you want me to read the other first reading ordinance?
Yes, please. It was a package.
Ordinance C 36691, establishing the Home Starts Here initiative, amending Chapter 18.05, adopting new sections 18.05.06, 0.07, 0.80 and 0.90, repealing sections 18.05.010 and 18.05.030 of the Spokane municipal code. Ordinance C 36692, codifying best practices for citing and activation of implement weather centers and emergency and transitional housing facilities and adopting new section 2.04.045, amending sections 2.05, excuse me, 2, 02.04.02, 0.005, 0.00, excuse me, 0.062, I'm having a rough time today, 0.063, and repealing sections 18.05.010 and 0.02 of the Spokane municipal code. Ordinance C 36693 is deferred indefinitely. Ordinance C 36694 regarding aggressive solicitation, adopting new sections 10.60.005 and 10.60.015 of the Spokane municipal code. Ordinance C 36695 relating to the fire code, amending Spokane municipal code sections 8.02.034, 0.0615, 17F.080, 0.010, 0.030, 1.10, 2.70, 3.30 and 4.80. Ordinance C 36699 is deferred to June 16, 2025 agenda. Ordinance C 36704 relating to the elimination of virtual currency kiosks within the city of Spokane and adopting a new chapter 10.90 to Title 10 of the Spokane municipal code. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
We have a number of public comments. First is Rayland Barden, then Brad Barnett, and then John Alder.
Council President, do you want to quickly brief, remind people of the rules?
Well, this is, we're still first readings, so we will not be taking action tonight. I believe you have two minutes. Please direct all your comments to the chair.
And clapping, cheering, booing?
Oh, no clapping, cheering. I thought I had a lot of return people, but really no clapping or cheering or booing. Please be respectful to people at the dais as they will respect you when you get up there. Rayland?
Thank you. Good evening, Council President and Council members. Rayland Barden, Director of Policy and Membership with the Downtown Spokane Partnership. I am here representing downtown employers, small businesses, nonprofit organizations and residents concerned their voice have not been left out of the design of these ordinance, specifically speaking to the suite of home ordinances that are proposed. While we appreciate the opportunity to participate in roundtable discussions held last fall, the legislation does not reflect the input shared by downtown stakeholders who confront daily challenges in being able to freely use sidewalks outside of their businesses or residents. Their concerns are not abstract. They are immediate, concrete threats to livelihoods and public safety. The downtown neighborhood is calling for meaningful relief that addresses the urgency of issues confronting them every day while the city works to support individuals who receive the help and support they need. This is a pivotal moment of the heart of our city. Downtown Spokane is a hub for commerce, entertainment and culture and is a growing residential neighborhood, as well as an economic engine for the entire city. The momentum we've built over the past 25 years has generated significant returns in the form of taxable sales, property revenue and job creation. On Friday, many of you joined us for our annual State of Downtown event where our CEO highlighted the progresses we have made and the persistent challenges we face in managing our downtown public spaces. Repealing sit-in lie or protections under existing camping or pedestrian interference is a step back at a time when Spokane has been intentional as possible to support hospitality or risk losing them to other communities that will. As the organization that has served as the steward of Spokane's downtown for 30 years, the DS Prey brings a deep understanding of the area's complexities and strong desire to collaborate on policies that support a thriving, inclusive and safe urban environment for all. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Brad Barnett, John Alder, and then Derek Gazaro.
Good evening, council. Brad Barnett from Spokane. I'm the president of the Spokane Business Association. The SBA wants to go on record as opposing ordinance 36679. We feel the language in this ordinance focuses on outreach and not on enforcement. This lack of enforcement will tie the hands of law enforcement officials and it will prevent people in need of help dealing with addiction and mental health issues from getting the treatment that they desperately deserve. Camping on public property interferes with the safety of our citizens to be in public spaces and engage in recreation and commercial activities. This impediment to commerce has already resulted in several businesses leaving the downtown area, resulting in loss of tax revenue to the city. Without a cooperative effort and the ability and willingness to enforce laws, Spokane will continue to see businesses exit downtown and will continue to see lost tax revenue. This continued practice will result in either cutting programs or raising taxpayer rates. It was exciting recently to see the council come together with all sides to come up with a collaborative approach on the ban the address. SBA would like for the council to have that same collaborative effort and we call on the city council to work with the county and the state to declare a 90-day state of emergency. This will allow resources to be brought to bear and allow us to truly make changes in Spokane. When Portland used the same strategy, the 90-day state of emergency, the rate of overdose deaths dropped by over 40% after that state of emergency. So, we feel the time for real change is now. And again, thank you for your recent cooperation and we call on you to continue to do that. And let's move forward to make Spokane a better place.
Thank you. John? And then Derek? And then Tasha?
I have several of these to comment on. First, at home, I'm going to sum it up if I hope the solutions will create homes that are affordable at 30% of everybody's income. Or at least build shelters. No jails unless crimes are committed. Homelessness is not a crime. As for the camping ones, the easiest solution is to build some 24/7 shelters with beds, storage, shelves and food, showers and foods with some job counseling. Give them a place to go. And last but not least to the aggressive solicitors, all of my heroes, Gandhi, MLK, went to the streets to get the kind of reform we needed from these protests. We have a First Amendment that guarantees freedom of speech and assembly. We already have a knucklehead DC robbing us left and right. Don't take any more of our rights away.
Thank you. Derek?
Derek Gazaro, supporting District One, the children of Spokane and the parks. Be it clear that this does away with the sit-in lie. So, anyone who's going to be voting for the new park levy and the school levy, keep that in strong mind. The Zappone-Dylan-Klitsky proposal breaks it down basically that if there's, you can have a caravan or homeless vans, motorhomes and such around the schools, there's nothing you can do about it. Prop one, the people voted on it. Basically, the spirit of that was to protect the children of Spokane. But at the same time, we obviously have to, you know, protect the rights of the homeless too, which are being taken advantage of. I really feel strongly that Kathcart's motion was much better. There's accountability to it. The other three and their motion, there's basically no accountability. You have to really prove there's actual danger to enforce this. The police department is going to be handing out brochures and correcting people and as according to the reading, that is going to be first and enforcement is second to the problem. So, it stands to reason that, like I said, bear in mind, the five votes, Klitsky, Dylan, Zappone, this is not support what the people wanted. And I guarantee, I don't even know why we're doing this. We should just go ahead tonight and vote on tonight. And don't waste everybody's time and effort speaking here. Because this group right here, I guarantee, is going to vote five-to-two on this ordinance. Guaranteed. They will not listen to Kathcart and Bingle to represent District One. That was made very clear at the briefing session. They don't care. And I can make that accusation because I've witnessed you all do it for years.
And thank you, Derek. Your time is up. Tasha Muhini? And then Maggie McKenzie and Sunshine Wigan.
Good evening, Council President and Council members. My name is Sasha Muhini and I'm a resident of Spokane Valley, but I work here in Spokane. I'm pursuing my MSW. And doing that, I've had the privilege of partnering with a group. And we've researched several unsuccessful and successful approaches to addressing homelessness nationwide as a team. Our research consistently shows that the most effective strategies tackle root causes alongside compassionate approaches to public safety. Combined approaches best reduce homelessness rates and negative community impacts. This package of ordinances reflects the commitment to addressing homelessness's root causes from housing affordability, economic security, to health and behavioral health support. And it aligns with evidence-based practices for long-term solutions. While balancing public order and compassionate support is delicate, the engagement-first model and therapeutic court referrals represent a crucial step towards a more humane approach. I see this package as a significant improvement over Spokane's past approaches. I ask specifically that the language in C5 of Section 12021007 exempting individuals from queuing and/or waiting outside of nonprofits remains intact. Success depends on diligent, well-resourced implementation, ensuring stated intent translates to tangible outcomes. If funded and implemented as intended, these policies have strong potential to be very effective and I look forward to seeing their positive impact. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe Maggie's online.
Maggie, you can go ahead and push star six and unmute yourself.
We will try Maggie again. Oh, there she is.
Sorry, go ahead, Maggie.
Maggie, we are not coming through. Could you work on your tech and we will circle back around to you? Come on up, Sunshine, please.
Are we on first ordinance readings?
First readings, yes.
Okay. So, on Sunshine Wigan, Spokane, on the camping one, I disagree with making it a seven-day camping thing. It's never taken me over 48 hours to 72 hours to get a person out of a camp or given them 48 hours right now, as is. The cops just kind of do that on average. And so, I am not for the seven-day camping because what, you get them camping in one spot and then they can move what, however, and then do seven days, another seven days somewhere else, et cetera. It's kind of a redundant cycle, whereas the goal is to get them into a step up, not a step in a cycle, if that makes sense. So, I do not support this. And I think, I think that our caseworkers are really good at pulling them out of camps. Not only that, it gives them time to bond with their garbage and because a lot of them hoard because they lose everything so much. Or they do the opposite where they will not cling to anything at all and they will just wear the clothes on their back. So, it's kind of both ways. And then, also with the Home Starts Here Initiative thing, you guys need to fix your shelter system. I'm locked out. This is my third time being locked out in 32 years. And normally, I can go to the Hope House where they don't deny me services ever for a, anything. It doesn't matter if my income's too high, too low, whatever. It doesn't matter if my income's too high, too low, whatever. Right now, a lot of us cannot work with SNAP. You guys have it to where we have to re-enter through SNAP. If we have a mental episode, they will not work with us after that for a long period of time. So I am not allowed, because I know exactly what projects I wanted to sign up for, I am not allowed to work with them. I am defiant, because I'm too damn smart. So, yeah, I think you guys should put another doorway through the revive, and if you did that, because revive doesn't turn people away, like I'm getting turned away.
Thank you. Do we think we have Maggie back or no? So Maggie, we are, go ahead.
Council President and Council Members, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Maggie McKenzie. I'm a graduate student at Eastern Washington University School of Social Work. I want to express my gratitude and give our support to the new ordinances created, my thoughtful deliberations in the roundtable discussions. I'm working with Sasha McWinni, and Rachel Grubb, and Allison Rickman. We have been working in a policy class and studying and researching what you're doing in our city. We are very, very impressed. The strategies that are pending will focus on engagement and enforcement and create resources etabli, etabli for all our residents in Spokane. When they're implemented, it will help everyone in our great city. Thank you so much for your hard work on creating these strategies. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Juan Salina, Amy Manning, and then Wendy Fishburne. Juan? I do not see him. Let's go to Amy Manning. Oh. Welcome, Juan, come on down. And then after Juan, Amy Manning, then Wendy Fishburne.
My name's Juan, also called Johnny. I live in Spokane, I'm Spokane resident. Wanted to talk a little bit about the citing, like citing people for illegal camping, and just talk about how, as a person of lived experience and coming from a life of homelessness, trauma, gangs, the, a lot of other stuff, but a person who came from that and fought hard to get where I'm at today, and advocate for people that don't have homes, you know, and that are struggling with substance use, or mental health, or trauma, citing somebody for not having a place to live, or not having a home, though it may not be big to you, it could affect them in the future, because like myself, my last, I'll share this, being, having a bunch of little misdemeanors, when you go to court for something bigger, it could affect us to where we could be locked up for a long time, and if people are trying to change their lives and get to a place where they can afford a home, and they're being cited, and they end up in jail, it's not just a little misdemeanor. It could really affect them in a long way where they may never get out. And I say that because I have-
Thank you, Juan, your time is up. Amy, Manning, Wendy Fishburne, and Angel Tomio-Sam will call in.
Hi, Council President, Council Members. Thank you for many parts of this, these ordinances. Really appreciate the approach that takes outreach and engagement. However, the pieces around enforcement, we are never going to criminalize ourselves out of homelessness, and there have been several mentions of the market taking care of affordable housing. That's never been the case in the United States. In the eighties, our HUD budgets went from $83 billion to $18 billion, and has never came back. We're in a 50-year affordable housing crisis on the precipice of something that is unprecedented as we look at a federal budget that looks to, looks to reduce Section 8 vouchers for our seniors, that looks to reduce our fair housing support for all kinds of marginalized folks. So when we're looking at citing people for their existence, for camping when there's no designated place, when we're looking at citing folks for taking a rest on the sidewalk, or being able to sleep, or just exist, that is not going to decrease our homelessness. It's also for businesses, like being able to have public restrooms, garbage cans, and places for folks to store their stuff would go a lot further to help the businesses address some of the issues that they are facing. But this enforcement for, when you read it, it feels like it is expanding sit and lie, and I know that there are some people here on the other side, but it feels like an expansion of sit and lie, and we still do not know where folks can exist, where outreach workers can provide services, where we can meaningfully engage folks to get them into housing and into services.
And thank you, Amy, your time is up. Next is Wendy, and then Angel will be calling in, and after Angel will be Larry Andrews.
Good evening, City Council. Wendy Fishburne, marriage and family therapist, East Spokane Business Association Vice President and a regular at the Homeless Coalition. I wanted to express my deep concerns about the misdirection of resources and energy in these originally cited homeless protections. If you focus on the wrong problem, you get the wrong solution. The same rate of overdose death occurs in housing or on the streets. The medical examiner is clear on this and clearly concerned. Fentanyl has changed everything, and we no longer have the luxury of considering housing solutions. The house is on fire, the kids are dying, face down on the streets. "Home Starts Here," et cetera, will not save lives. It will delay enforcement and delay critical direction to detox and treatment centers. Worse, messaging matters. Regardless of the details of the policies, what Spokane is hearing and responding to is that Prop one enforcement is gone. Seven days of camping citywide, no tracking, no enforcement. With our own eyes, we can see the explosion of street living, open drug use, since y'all opted not to uphold the will of the people. 73% of Spokane agreed. That never happens. Please get back to a simple yes on the original Prop one. These big, beautiful ordinances are truly a crap sandwich that blurs enforcement, perpetuates addiction, and rewards criminal lifestyles. We can't keep making addiction comfortable, or they'll continue to die in our government-funded housing. Please follow your progressive leaders and get serious about addiction and crime. There are solutions that other municipalities have made, recriminalizing drug use, statewide no camping. Failing to engage in these policies leads to avoidable death and negligent manslaughter. Thanks for serving. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Wendy. Angel, are you online?
So, my name is Angel Tomio-Sam. I'm a voting neighbor, raised and raising a family in District One. I'm also the executive director and co-founder of YoYo Spokane, organizer with Cool Spokane, and a leader with Experience Matters. I speak today not only as an advocate, but as a Native American woman, a humanist, and someone deeply committed to real public safety rooted in justice, healing, and community. Proposed changes to Spokane Municipal Code, specifically the expansion of sit and lie laws, and the removal of the requirement to verify shelter availability before enforcement represents a dangerous shift in policy. These changes would empower law enforcement to criminalize people for surviving in public spaces, regardless of whether shelter is actually available, safe, or accessible. This is not policy, it's punishment, and it targets the most vulnerable in our community, those living with disabilities, untreated mental health conditions, Indigenous and Black and other people of color, are all our community members, LGBTQ, Two-Spirit youth, and people struggling with trauma or addiction. Many already face barriers to shelter, including capacity limits, gender restrictions, or lack of cultural safety. Let's look at the numbers. Spokane has more than 2,000 unhoused residents, but fewer than 1,000 shelter beds, and many are not low-barrier. The cost of jailing a person in Spokane County exceeds $150 a day, while supportive housing costs around $70 per day, and comes with better long-term outcome. Criminalizing homelessness leads to fines people can't pay, arrest warrants, and incarceration, thus deepening the poverty and making employment, housing, and recovery nearly impossible. The community pays the price, not just in human suffering, but in fiscal waste. Meanwhile, our city remains no closer to real solutions. Instead of expanding criminalization, Spokane must invest in what actually works. That means deeply affordable, supportive, and transitional housing, voluntary trauma-informed mental health and substance use treatment, culturally rooted low-barrier shelters that serve all people, including LGBTQ, Two-Spirit Plus, and Indigenous residents. Public restrooms and trash receptacles throughout the city, state-designated places, and regular times for service providers to connect with unhoused individuals. As a Native woman and someone with lived and professional experience in systems reform, I urge the City Council to reject the expansion of sit and lie policy and to resist criminalizing people's existence. Let's lead with care, accountability, and community-based solutions that reflect both fiscal responsibility and basic human dignity.
Angel? Thank you, Angel. Larry Andrews, then Michelle Pappas, and then John Alder.
My name's Larry Andrews. I have a, live in Spokane, and I also have a business. To all you comrades out here, the five of ya, we can't keep going down the path we have, because the result's not gonna change. To allow camping in all the parks, you think I'm gonna pay any money for a park initiative? You gotta be kidding me. I'm not gonna let somebody shit all over my parks, and, and then you're gonna ask-
I'm so sorry, Larry, quick point of order, please. Just watch the profanity. Just watch the profanity.
It's not profanity, it's what's happening. It's happened right out in our front yards lately, okay? And it's the truth, okay? And nobody wants to pay the parks anymore, because you guys don't keep them clean. I wouldn't want the kids to go there anymore, because of what they might catch, or the needle that they might catch in front of, okay? And it's not profanity, it's actual life here in Spokane, and it's a shame. It's a shame that we've degraded to such a point that we can't come out of it, and we keep pampering people and pampering people. Give them seven days, you gotta be out of your minds, okay? There'll be tents everywhere. Can you imagine going up to Manitoba Flowers up there, and then see the whole thing full of camps and tents? That's what you're gonna have. Come on, be realistic here. You guys are so far out the left side that it's beyond belief, and we can't stand for it anymore. And, and, and there's gonna be some change, and it's gonna come soon, because people are getting tired and fed up of what's happening here in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Michelle Pappas, and then John Alder, and then Jerry Schwab. Oh, I got you on twice. Thank you, John. So Michelle, and then Jerry Schwab after that.
Hello, Council. My name is Michelle Pappas. I'm speaking to you today on behalf of Experience Matters, and I am a resident of Spokane. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all today, and today I would like to speak about pedestrian interference, or specifically sit and lie ordinances. I, myself, have experienced homelessness within the last seven years. I was not addicted, but I am, I was homeless, and I currently am disabled. This policy would have negatively affected my time while I was in survival mode, and today while my housing is even stable. In 1974, we repealed what was called ugly laws. We, as people with disabilities, were once finally able to leave our homes without fear that our physical and mental disabilities would not land us in jail and in institutionalization. What I see with this type of policy is a revert back to the ablest policies that we had previously. It makes the people in my disability community afraid to leave their houses. People should be free to sit and rest in public spaces without worry about being approached by an officer. We cannot criminalize simply being. We must remember that when we talk about homeless people, we talk about human beings, and that my mother taught me to value all human life, to value those in my community who are struggling, regardless of their housing status. People need shelter. They need places to use the restroom. And though I cannot believe I have to say it, I think the time calls for it, everyone in this room needs to use the restroom. Why is it any different? Why is our expectation different? Why are we not seeking support services and focusing our efforts there? Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry, and then Leo Richardson, and then Richard Rep.
Jerry Schwab, resident of Spokane. I'm, I'm in charge of the Adopt a Block program for Gabriel's Challenge. I did 43 years of social services in this area. I was on the Governor's Advisory Council on Homelessness and the National Presbyterian Network to End Homelessness. I know what we need, and it's not rocket science. So there's an individual that's been Narcan 17 times, he will die any day now, and I've known him since he was a kid. He's in his 30s. We had 187 Narcans in one month and 84 transports to the hospital. People are dying every week, and I don't want to criminalize homelessness, but I want to save people's lives. We need to save people's lives, and we need to do it fast. So in Dade County, they had a diversion program. Before you even got arrested, you got assessed to figure out whether you had a substance abuse issue, a mental health issue, or whether you were a deep criminal. 24 people did 2,000 crimes around Second and Brown. 31% of the criminal activity was done by 24 people. We need those people in jail. The other people, who we feel badly about, they need mental health and substance abuse services, and they need places to sleep. I know a guy that gets his phone stolen every week when he sleeps during the day, because he's dead out. He can never keep a phone. He needs a place to sleep during the day, a safe place. Come on, Spokane, get your act together and start saving people's lives.
Next is Leo Richardson, Richard Rep, and then Dennis Flynn.
Tough act to follow. I'm Leo, excuse me, Leo Richardson, longtime resident of Spokane, and also part of Gabriel's Challenge. Been down recently pretty much every day for the last month or so around the Red Path Hotel, just trying to connect with some of the folks down there to see what is happening on the streets. And Jerry is correct, that that is, we've got a huge problem, that we have residents downtown who are seeing all kinds of fentanyl use out in front of their- use out in front of their buildings, business owners, the same thing. And right now, there's nothing happening with that. We talked to the police that, you know, pull up around there and, in fact, do take people in, but it seems to be a catch-and-release situation. And I don't know if that is a matter of room in the jails or what, but they're booked in, and then they're out within a couple hours, and they're back on the streets again. Fentanyl is a huge problem. We have to look at it and say, what is happening right now is unacceptable, and take a look at what the answer is. And it always... it does revolve around money, and maybe it's a reallocation of funds somehow to take care of the problem. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Richard Rep, and then Dennis Flynn, and then Jerry Quinn, if he's in the house.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Richard Rep. I'm a corporate attorney here in Spokane. I've lived in Spokane and worked in downtown Spokane since 2001, and over the past couple decades, I've represented hundreds of clients that have employed in the aggregate thousands of employees, generating significant tax revenue for this city. And I'm here tonight because my clients and their employees, my friends and family, my coworkers and all of their families are all very frustrated and concerned with the deterioration of peace and safety and the escalating chaos and crime that we're seeing on our streets. And it's been enabled with bad policies, and I'm here specifically because of the camping ordinance as proposed and amended. I applaud you, and I'm grateful that, as a council, you have recognized that we do need to replace Proposition 1, following the State Supreme Court's ruling. However, the idea of a seven-day pass on camping? That's crazy. It's crazy on its face. It should be embarrassing that we're even having that part of the legislation that's being considered. It's also insulting to the 73% of the people and the voters who passed Proposition 1 to protect our schools, parks, and daycare centers. I just wanted to make two simple points tonight. Number one, I'm not alone. There are many other people in this community. The vast majority of the people in this community share my concern and don't want to see a seven-day pass on camping in our public parks, next to our schools, near our children, and the daycare centers. You can't pass that. But point number two is if you do, we will not forget the people that have worked hard in this city to make it what it is. I work... I serve on three different nonprofit boards. I work with a community of people that are actively grinding every day to create new companies, new jobs, new opportunities to make this city a better place to live, work, and play. But you allow a seven-day camping pass? You're gonna destroy this city, and we will remember when it's time to be up for election again.
Thank you. Dennis Flynn, and then Jerry Quinn, and then Barbara Woodbridge.
Hey, Council, Dennis Flynn, lived near St. Charles. Evidence-based models actually means evaluating the results and maybe taking a different path if they show not the results you wanted. Will you do that? But that's not what I came up here for. I noticed that four of six of the items in the first reading request to suspend the rules. Why is that? Are you incapable of running a council able to complete its most basic of duties? Or are we being obscuring of the intent by bending the rules for passing what I expect to be five to two votes in the shadows? I guess we'll find out in a few minutes.
Thank you. Jerry Quinn, and after Jerry, Barbara Woodbridge.
Hi. I don't really have a whole lot prepared to say. This is only like my second or third time down here. My name is Jerry Quinn. I was... I've been living in Spokane since 1967. I spent seven years in the Army. I spent 15 years living in Seattle and five in San Francisco. So, I have a lot of diversity. I have a lot of lived experiences that probably are pretty rich and deep and something to listen to. And I don't want to be here. I really don't want to be here. But I'm here because... and I don't even know what we're talking about. 75% of the people in this city voted to protect our children. That's it. It's not complicated. It's really simple. All this compassion we have for the homeless and the trauma and the Two Spirits, whatever all that's about, fine. You work for the city, the citizens of the city of Spokane, not for every little niche group. And I'm here because I didn't want to be, but I'm getting activated because of what you guys are doing. Do you care about children? Do you? You don't seem to act like it. You don't care... you don't seem to care a whole lot about democracy either. You know what that means? 75% of the citizens vote for something, and what do you do? You repackage it up, liquidate it, and water it down. Am I pissed? No. I'm happy. This is my happy face. I'm happy to be here in front of the City Council that doesn't seem to understand when we vote for something to protect our children, we want you to at least try to support it. We know it doesn't follow with your agenda. We just want you to do the right thing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Barbara, and then Phil Altmaier, and then Jacqueline Ross.
All right. Well, my name is Barbara Woodbridge, and I am the president of the East Spokane Business Association. And like many of you, on Friday, I went to the state of the city breakfast, and it was great. I truly enjoyed hearing all of the applause for what's happening downtown with positive, a hope, a light of what they see is happening in Spokane, and a vision of what can be. And then after that, I went ahead and I changed into some jeans and tennis shoes because we're part... Espa has taken on a block for the Gabriel's Challenge. We got our garbage pickers out in our garbage bags, and after hearing such an amazing breakfast of hope, we go down, and we're right there at 7-Eleven, right down where there are pods of people together and just in devastation. We picked up garbage like you wouldn't believe all around the things that we saw. You're right, there does need to be restrooms around. Unfortunately, when we've had them, say, at Camp Hope and other places, they're not respected, and they become more of a cost of problem for us. But in reality, when we look around and we say, you know, our city, we have so much potential, and we want to protect it, but it's... if we allow the seven days to be out there when you see them starting to compile after one day, it's going to, like I've heard before, it's going to cause damage to our city. So, when I talk to the businesses in the area and residents, there is a unanimous concern that not enough is being done to protect our beautiful city, and by allowing this to happen, it will actually enable its harmful compassion, and that's just not fair to anybody who's on the street, who has to live that way, or the people who actually have to clean it up and pay for it, which is the taxpayers who paid to be against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil Altmaier, and then Jacqueline Ross.
Good evening, City Council. A lot of energy about this topic. Going on 39 years of working with the homeless, I just... so much has been said that I don't want to repeat it. I want to echo that the voters have spoken of what they want, and I would hope that you would honor that. One thing I would say, it's a privilege to stand before the people that set the policies of our city that determine what our city looks like. Everyone's talked about not enough services being overwhelmed. The policies of this city has brought homeless people to the city. I can verify that by not just local communities, but from other states because of the policies of this city. And I'll tell you, when you reinforce no accountability with your compassion, when you reinforce those that make the worst choices go to the front of the line and get the housing, they're gonna come. When you allow people to live on your streets, they're gonna live on your streets. And so, my hope is... it's kind of interesting tonight. I've wanted to applaud what some people have said. I've wanted to go, amen. I've wanted to shout, someone here has corrected someone on the rules. You have guidelines and policies for what takes place in this chamber right now. Why do you have those? Can I ask? You have them for a reason, because they govern what takes place here. Just envision, the policies you are making are governing what our city looks like. They're important. So, when you look at this policies that you're making, is it really a change from the road we've been on for the last how many years? We did it with Camp Hope. We ended up with more homeless people here than we've ever had. What your policy does doesn't change what our city has done, and if you think the need is gonna get less, it's only gonna come more. My time is up, and I gotta abide by your policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Jacqueline Ross, please.
I'm a citizen of Spokane, and I've lived downtown for nine years. And the reason I'm here is to...
Hey, Jacqueline, sorry, can we pause real quick? Would you mind stepping over to the microphone for us?
Okay. So, Jacqueline Ross, I am a citizen of downtown Spokane. I've lived in downtown Spokane for nine years. I'm here to support the municipal code. There are exceptions to the municipal code's regulations, but they're reasonable. We absolutely should support that municipal code. Without law and order, we have chaos and discord. We need to think about the citizens who live here and who trust that we're going to make a livable environment for them. If we don't have a city that has law and order, then we are not going to have people live downtown or come downtown, spend their money downtown, or pay their taxes. And everything that people have said tonight to say that we need law and order is absolutely true. It doesn't mean the rest of us who want regulations and ordinances don't have compassion. We do. But we also have compassion for people who live as citizens should live, with respect to others. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes our testimony on...
Sorry, just a point of information. Maybe Chris could help. There was a couple comments about sit and lie expanding. Could you just, based on your understanding of the ordinance, comment on whether... and we did adopt an amendment today, so maybe I missed something that got added back in, but maybe you could just comment on what the status of sit and lie is?
Excuse me, sorry. One way to look at it is that the new provisions apply citywide. So, to the extent that you are happy with the regulations related to sit and lie, they will apply citywide and not be confined to downtown or specific hours.
But is there a language that defines sit and lie that is in this ordinance? Or is there pedestrian interference language and no sit and lie language?
I don't remember. I'm sorry.
That's right. We could put some information out to clarify.
Councilmember Dylan.
I would say that it's more closer to pedestrian interference with obstruction of public right-of-way. And then also, just another quick point of clarification, camping was banned in parks before Prop 1 and after, regardless of what policy we're voting on tonight. I heard that repeatedly also mentioned.
Thank you. At this point, we're now going to have testimony on a special consideration... yes?
I did want to speak on those briefly, if I could. I heard a couple people talking about the, you know, an engagement-first model and things that we're trying to do, and I just want to share some stats on engagement that we were given from our police chief when it came to specifically the core program downtown. So, in the downtown area, we had 190 people that we engaged in the first month, right, in this program. And of the 190, 13 decided to engage with services. That's not followed through with services, but decided to choose engagement, okay? So, of the 190, if we just assumed that all 13 actually followed through, that was 7% of the people that we engaged decided to take us up on that offer to go through that. I don't think that that is a working model for the city of Spokane. And to another point, in our own data, in our 2023 point-in-time count, we actually have the data of... that's been presented to us of people who are homeless in this area and, you know, if they're from Spokane or where their last known residence was. So, we asked this question to 173 people, and I have my own reasons why I think we only asked 173, but of the 173, 68 of the 173 said that their last known residence was Washington State, not even Spokane, okay? So, about 2/3 of the people who responded to this question said that their last known residence was a state other than Washington. And keep in mind, again, of the 68, Washington is pretty big, right? I mean, there's 7 million people in the state of Washington, and we've got 230,000 people in the city of Spokane. So, we are dealing with some things that I don't... I think, you know, when we're talking about misinformation and disinformation from our own... from our own data that's come in from our own people putting these policies out, doing the counts, presenting the data before us. In our own acknowledged data, we are seeing that a lot of the things that are being said are misinformation or disinformation. It's actually not misinformation or disinformation. It's accurate based on our own data, and I think that that's important for the public to understand that this community is incredibly generous, is incredibly caring, wants to take care of people, and really wants to take care of its own citizens. And I think that that's the request often that people take and misconstrue into saying, well, you just don't want to see homeless folks, or you just want to criminalize homelessness, or whatever it is, and that's just honestly not the truth, okay? You know, we want to help people as much as we can. You know, we prefer to help our own people, and, you know, maybe you help your people, and maybe if we all take care of our own, we'll be a little bit better off. But I think Mr. Altmaier said it best when it was, our policies attract folks, you know, who want to engage in certain activities that we've permitted and that we've allowed. And that's the kind of thing where we have to take a real hard-line stance on certain actions that are not acceptable. Because again, the reason why Grants Pass happened, it's important to remember, Grants Pass happened because the Supreme Court ruled that it is not cruel and unusual punishment to enforce generally applicable laws, okay? Because it's not your housing status that we're criminalizing. It is a behavior, an action, something along those lines. It is not whether or not you have, you know, a house. Some of the other things that we hear all the time is that, you know, the overdoses, most of them are happening in people's homes. We saw data today that that is also not accurate. It's not even a plurality, okay? Most overdoses are happening on the streets or in somebody's business, and this is what, again, our own data is telling us. And I think that that has been some misinformation that we may have peddled in that needs to be corrected. So, I think it's important that when we are looking at public policy, that we look to what has been successful and what hasn't been successful. And I think that we've seen that what we've been doing has not been overly successful. One other thing that hasn't been all that successful in a lot of areas is public restrooms. I hear a lot about public restrooms. What we've seen in Seattle, and San Francisco, and Portland, and Denver is public restrooms oftentimes become hotspots for sex trafficking, prostitution, you know, drug use, shelters, all kinds of stuff. And so, I think that if we don't tolerate criminal behavior, a lot of these ideas become a lot more viable. But first and foremost, we need to set the standard in the city of Spokane. We need a culture that says illegal activity won't be tolerated. It is not need that we're not tolerating. Everybody has been needy before, and we all want to help those in need, but it is always, always the illegal activity that is not acceptable in the city of Spokane.
Thank you. Councilmember Bingo. I'm not disagreeing with what you said, but as we have learned through Gabriel's Challenge from our medical providers, since we are the central location for services, people who live in the state of Washington, there is nowhere else for them to go but to come to Spokane for help. And I'm not saying that's right or wrong. I'm just saying we know our counties to the north and to the south with our mental health services, our medical services, where the jail is located. So, we... I think it just has to be taken under consideration when we're discussing that.
Yeah, and I would say back to our point-in-time count data, you know, when it's looking at people in their last known residence, we had 12 people who said that their last known residence was California, four Arizona, four Colorado, four Connecticut, two Florida, one Georgia, one Arizona, one Alabama, two Alaska. We had 36, say Idaho, one Indiana, one Kansas, one Louisiana, one Maryland, two Minnesota, one Missouri, four Montana, one North Carolina, one Nebraska, one New Mexico, five from Nevada, two from New York, five from Oklahoma, five from Oregon, two from Tennessee, four from Texas, 68, again, from the state of Washington, one from Wisconsin, and one from Wyoming. So, it's not necessarily just our close region. I mean, it's genuinely all over the United States that people are coming here.
Councilmember Zappone.
Yeah, I think another point for clarification from what we heard today is that sit and lie currently requires shelter bed availability, and the new proposed ordinance would not require shelter bed availability citywide at all times for no camping. That is also under Prop 1, and this would expand it to all city, across the entire city at all times. So, I think that is a... So I think that is an important clarification for the public to know.
Councilmember Kat Cart, and then Dave Billsland was overlooked on our public comment. So come on in, Dave, Councilmember Kat Cart.
Yeah, since we're all saying things. I would just add one quick thing. There was an ordinance that would have eliminated those requirements for sit-in lie to be enforced. That ordinance was not allowed to be heard. So there have been attempts to fix the errors that are in our code based on previous court cases without throwing the baby out with the bathwater. But the new version eliminates any reference to sit-in lie. It is purely about whether or not you are an obstacle to somebody passing by or accessing something.
Thank you. Dave? Sorry, you were omitted, Dave.
Dave Billsland Logan. I have a problem with 36694. Here in definitions, in Section 1, it includes under soliciting to solicit signatures on a petition or opinions for a survey. One thing you need to realize is in the Washington State Constitution, Section 4, right of petition and assemblage, I quote from the state constitution here, "The right of petition and of people peaceably to assemble for the common good will never be abridged." And this ordinance abridges that constitutional right. You need to take those words out or you're going to get sued for it for violating the state constitution. That's not good for any of us to do. Now, I'm not calling you out on this to complain about it. I'm letting you guys know about it. You got to fix it or there's going to be problems. Because if I can't collect signatures for a petition, I'm going to be real upset. That's the only way I've ever made any money in politics is collecting signatures. And in this ordinance, you're precluding me from that.
Thank you. That concludes our testimony on first readings. We're now going on to special considerations. On special consideration, the letter supporting the American Indian Community Center, there are three comments from the public, John Alders, Larry Andrews, and then Sunshine Wigan.
Would you like me to read it?
Yes, please.
S1, "Letter from the City Council to Executive Director Linda Louch to express support for the setting of a new permanent home for the American Indian Community Center on the land secured in High Bridge Park near the confluence of Leetaw Creek and the Spokane River."
John?
John Alder from Spokane. Spokane Alliance is one of the groups I've been with, and we have supported the American Indian Center in many ways. In fact, we have had a fundraising campaign to help them get this done. They're a great organization that helps not just the Native Americans, as their name says, but I myself went in there for an open house and got a coat even though I didn't need that. But they don't help anybody. We need to do everything we can to support these people, and I'm asking all 70 of you to do the same thing.
Thank you, John. Sunshine?
Sunshine Wigan, born in Spokane, homeless. As a homeless person, I feel loved, accepted, and understood by Police Chief Hall, and he listens very well to my needs. And I just wanted to say publicly thank you to him. He lets me know, he respects me with his body language and his actions. He has a lot of mercy for the homeless. Feelings and acts, feelings are temporary, based, and can change in a moment. Some are long and some shorter than others. Acts, on the other hand, hold value and accountability. Our actions do not go away. They show history of our character. Both feeling and actions are subject to change as we evolve.
Thank you. Larry Andrews?
Larry Andrews, citizen of Spokane, and business in District 1, and my home's in District 1, too. Anyway, to all you comrades here, I support the American Native Indians, and I would support them and all their endeavors. They're a great group of people, and they give this country great strength. And I think we should support these people in all we can and all we can do. And they've had some great injustices done to them over the years, but so have we. And if we can help them, we should. And I think that for all people, whether you're Latino, Polish, Romanian, whoever, as long as you want to become a great citizen here in Spokane, and you're willing to work to do it and help others, I think that's what Spokane's about. And I would hope you would all share the same thing. And I think it is important. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any council commentary before we take the vote? Councilmember Bingo?
Yeah, no, I'm excited for this one right here. We tried to get some ARPA money to help out with the fundraising efforts. It didn't work out. But, you know, former Councilwoman Stratton is working on this project, and she was here telling us today that we need about 16, or not we, the American Indian Cultural Center needs about $16.5 million to get built. Again, they've moved around quite a bit, finding a permanent home that they are happy with and are going to be able to expand and do all the efforts they need to do is going to be good. And they're at about $2 million right now. The practical effect of this letter will help them to go out and access grants a little bit more easily and help them score higher on those applications so that they can get a, again, a final and permanent spot to build this. I want to thank, again, former Councilwoman Stratton for her efforts in this way and for all of her service there. And I'm hoping that we find out some good news when this is done, that, you know, they were able to access some money for this.
Councilmember Klitschke?
Thank you. I'm excited about this. This will be going in District 3 at the confluence of Leetaw Creek and the Spokane River on a beautiful site that is also accessible by transit. And like was said earlier, they will serve everyone in the community. They always have. So this is an amazing asset that will be coming together. It was privileged to be able to participate in the scoping and design process for the early architectural drawings for this space. And they have an amazing plan. I encourage you to check it out, and I hope that this comes together soon.
Any other council commentary? In that case, prepare to vote. Great, thank you. 7-0.
Council President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to defer Special Consideration 2 for two weeks till the June 16th meeting.
Second.
I'll speak on that if I could.
Go ahead, Councilmember Bingo.
So as I was talking about earlier, you know, the task force that we're trying to bring together is really something where we're going to want the entire regional, or the entire region, excuse me, to be on the same page here. And recently, we have taken an action that has caused some of our partners to be upset with us, and we have a little bit of relationship building to do, I think, before we move this forward. Because if we go forward now, I think that we don't have unanimous support throughout the city of Spokane, the county, the valley, and our other partners. And really, in an effort as important as a new jail measure, we're really going to want as much cooperation as possible. We're going to want as much buy-in as possible. And so I think for us deferring this for a couple of weeks, that gives us the ability to go out and try to mend some of the relationships, because it is going to take some time for us to work through some of the problems that we've created.
Councilmember Dylan?
Yeah, it's not problems we've created. There's a lot of reasons that we're deferring this. We did have an earlier discussion. Some more information came to light. Councilmember Cathcart did raise it about some of the legal concerns, and that was related to OPMA issues. Did check in with the county between agenda review and tonight to just confirm that. So how we post these meetings, how we have elected officials there, and making sure, of course, you, the public, are a part of these meetings so we can get that feedback. The utility bill that was sent that received some coverage over the weekend, certainly there's some bad feelings there, but that is not the main impetus as to why. And so there's a lot of different regional things that we've even passed tonight and a lot more collaboration, a lot more room for that. But all of that is moving and we're rowing in the same direction.
Councilmember Kat Cart?
Yeah, real briefly. Certainly, legal issues are probably the primary reason for deferral, but there's no reason in the next two weeks we can't focus on how do we correct some of the relational issues that might exist to make sure that we can continue to partner on big, big, big ideas like this. I think that's going to be very important for us going forward.
Thank you. I know we're doing a deferral, but three people did sign up to speak to this, and I'm going to honor their signing up tonight, not knowing we were going to defer. It's John Alder, Sunshine Wigan, and then David Adamson, if he's in the room.
I have no problem with the task force, but this task force seems to be led by law enforcement. My experience with people who are dealing with drugs, especially homelessness, they're going to feel more comfortable with treatment-oriented people running this task force. I would like to see some kind of evidence that the treatment-oriented people are having a say in this task force.
Thank you. Sunshine? And then David Adamson, if he's in the room.
Is this the OPIAD FFWQ one?
No, this is the special task force.
Oh, yeah, I totally support this. I like it when we put task force because they are able to come together and help. I see a lot, since we put some task force down there by the Rid Path, I've seen differences in some of these hotspots. And so in the past, I like how when we have task force, they can also come together with the other task force and kind of brainstorm together to try to find better solutions and things of that nature. I've found a lot of support in these task force. Certain task force, you can actually contact and be like, hey, having a really hard time, you know, with being homeless over in this area, and this is what I'm seeing. And they'll come in and they'll kind of clean it up for us and help us that are the homeless, the actual homeless that aren't doing the criminals' acts. So anyways, I do support this if it's at a cost that we can afford. Thank you.
Thank you, Sunshine. And David?
Good evening, Council President, Council members. My name's David Adamson. I work in the Holly Mason Building near Second and Howard. I lead a commercial real estate appraisal group. On May 6, Nick Gibson of The Spokesman Review published an article titled, "As Its Namesake Faces Market Pressures, Millwood Contends With Related Property Tax Increases." Nick's article highlighted how Inland Empire Paper successfully appealed and reduced the assessed value of their facility by nearly 60%, which in turn reduced their real estate tax bill by half a million dollars. With this half a million dollar decrease in real estate tax revenue, 86% of homeowners in Millwood now have to pay an additional 13% in city property taxes over the last year.
So David, I'm going to interrupt you. Is this in regards to the task?
It's in regards to downtown.
Okay, all right.
So now, here in Spokane, we have hundreds of buildings within the downtown, most of which are office buildings that rent to businesses. I've heard from multiple commercial office brokers that leasing space in the downtown has been very slow. But instead of blaming it on the pandemic as the reason, these brokers stated it's because of crime and safety concerns by prospective tenants. This has negatively impacted office building assessed values in the downtown. For example, 710 West Riverside, where the City of Spokane Police Department houses, where they lease space, it recently sold on May 1st for 65% less than what it was purchased for in 2017. What assurance do your voters have that the impact of crime and lack of safety negatively impacting assessed values in the downtown core will not raise their home's property taxes like what recently happened in Millwood? The mayor has coined the phrase "all of the above" with respect to her initiative regarding homelessness. As you create this new safe and healthy Spokane task force, please consider all of the above businesses above street level and the residences that generate the rent through real estate taxes to help with the homelessness, to fund the police officers and the first responders, and to fund all city services, including jails. Keep these all-in-the-above businesses first and foremost in your mind as you move forward with this task force. They're the goose that lays the golden eggs. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second on the floor to defer till June 16th. I think, Councilmember, I think you've already spoken twice to this mission.
I spoke once, and then we allowed testimony.
Okay, what is your comment, Councilmember?
So my comment is that, you know, that it was said that the problems weren't created by us. It absolutely was created by us when we sent a $60 million utility bill to Spokane Valley, basically, and said you're going to pay $60 million extra, of which 25 million was interest and penalties. I don't know how that's creating a good regional partnership and regional relationship, but it absolutely is because before that utility bill was sent, this thing was basically a done deal, like we were all voting on it. We had, you know, the regional cooperation. After that bill came out, that's when things changed. I don't know how you want to define that. I would say that that's a problem that we created because it was our bill, our letter that we sent. Lastly, you've heard about OPMA and the legal issues, and I just kind of want to say what those are. What are these issues? Well, the problem is that if we actually create a specific task force, now it is subject to OPMA. And so what will likely happen in the next couple of weeks as we work through this is that the official task force designation could be removed, because then the conversations could happen without them having to be noticed with minutes, with things like that. And so this process actually could be something where the public does not have as much access on what's happening in this task force. So when we're talking about the OPMA and the legal issues, I think that that was understood by somebody, and so I think that that's why a deferral came. But I'm specifically deferring because what I, or made the motion to defer, because what I want to have happen is, because this is such an important issue, we really do need 100% regional buy-in. And after the utility letter came out, we did not have 100% buy-in, and we need 100% buy-in on this.
All right. Councilmember Zappone?
Yeah, I'll also support the deferral. I supported it earlier today. I think it is important to work and take time to work collaboratively with partners. But I do want to also point out that the city of Spokane did get a finding from the auditor's office about this facility charge, and that we have to deal with a finding from the auditor's office. It's not something that we don't get to not deal with.
Councilmember Kat Cart?
Yeah, I think that finding was largely dealt with when the solution from the previous administration was put in place. Now, should it have come to council? Yes. It did not, but it was in place. And so this was kind of a stunner to everybody that something that was largely settled and accepted to be settled was brought back into the fray and at a whole different level. When we were talking about this three years ago, it was $8 million. And now it's $60 million. And so trying to come up with exactly what the algorithm was that was used, stick them up with these numbers, I'm a little lost trying to figure that out. But to go from $8 million three years ago that was due, or supposedly due, to now $60 million, we just shouldn't be balancing our budgets on the backs of our neighbors. That's not how we should do it.
Here's a motion and a second on the floor to defer this for two weeks until June 16th. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any notes? Have sent you this is deferred. Thank you. Now, this is the time and place set for the public hearing on the matter text amendments to the Unified Development Code. The hearing is now called to order. Is there any staff presentations for this hearing? Is there any comment from council on this hearing?
Excuse me. Could I read this item first?
Yes.
Okay. H1, Hearing on Final Reading Ordinance C-36696, Amending Title 17 of the Spokane Municipal Code to Update Regulations Governing Accessory Dwelling Units (ADUs) in accordance with House Bill 1337, Specifically amending Section 17A.020.010A, Definitions Chapter 17C.111.205 Development Standards Tables, Chapter 17C.300 Accessory Dwelling Units, Section 17H.010.040 Initiation of Street Improvement Projects, Setting an Effective Date and Other Matters Properly Related There Too.
Again, thank you, Ms. Fister. Hearing no council comment, I will entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
It's a second? It's been moved to second to close the hearing. Now, we are voting on the hearing on the ordinance 36896. All those in favor? The hearing is closed. It's been moved to second to close the hearing. All those in favor, indicated by saying aye. The hearing is not closed.
This is the vote to close the hearing?
Yes, it's the vote to close the hearing, yes. Now, I'll entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to adopt the final reading ordinance.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor, please, can I do a voice vote? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? The hearing is adopted. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fister. That brings us to the end of our legislative agenda. We will now transition into open forum. There is a number of people signed up tonight. Please remember, you have two minutes. No clapping, booing. All comments are directed to the chair. And we will start with John Alder, Derek Azaro, Juan Saladina, if he's still in the room. So, Zanya, thank you. Get my tongue around that.
Hi, I'm here again. I was at a excess for all reading for disabled rights people. And one thing they're extremely upset is with the lime scooters and bikes on sidewalks. It makes them very nervous that they don't always handle it so well. They close zoom and buy them. And when I see all these bike lanes now, you're building on Riverside, Sprague and Riverside, I'm wondering if there could be an ordinance specifying no green lines or bikes on sidewalks, especially when bike lanes were available. That's all.
Thank you, John. Derek? And then Sunshine? And after that, it'll be Juan, and then Wendy Fishburne. Yes? Okay, you already spoken? Okay, thank you. Derek?
Derek Azaro, supporting District One and the children of the community. This proposal that you're talking about tonight, I didn't get a chance to bring it in, but what impacts would be proposed, proposal have on historically excluded community? I guess the PD has the data on Prop 1 citations, still not available. Go down the list. It's not known what the data public available. So you're doing this without any data, knowing what the actual results were, the citations? And another comment is, point of order, point of order, point of order. That's pretty much all we hear out of Zepone every single time. Anytime District One wants to say something, it's point of order. I'd like to make a point of order. All the years I've been coming here, I've never heard one time him say, "My constituents." All rest of you have all said, "My constituents." All I repeatedly see is every time District One, regardless of who was elected to that seat, is blocked. Every single time. And yet, here you're trying to do these changes, and you don't even have the data from the PD on the actual citations. So going forward, if you're going to do this, you got to get your facts straight and get this, get this data out. But I, like I said earlier, I absolutely guarantee you will vote five to two on with Dylan Zepone and Klitschke's proposals. Klitschke also said at previous meeting that all parks are safe. Absolutely not true. Absolutely not true. If that's the case, I would say bring your daughter down here in a bathing suit to dance out here in this fountain out here while the pedophiles gander at her daughter and all the other small children in the park next door. How many times did Rick Boka have to come in here and tell you this, and nothing's even, even said about it or done about it?
And thank you, Derek.
So the parks are not safe, according to Klitschke.
Thank you. Sunshine? And then Wendy?
Sunshine, Spokane. So what I notice is, like, with this new mayor, there's a lot of reform going on with the arts, with the shelter system and a bunch of stuff. It's like she just wants to remake everything. It's really frustrating not having the Hope House. There's 57 beds, I think, is what the director said, just sitting there. Now, we're planning on making those respite beds for men and women. So I'm kind of wondering, like, we did the math. It's not that much difference than what you're doing. In fact, these new shelters actually cost more, in my opinion. But if you do the math right. Why do we have them in the Westminister Church instead of a more cleanly place like the Hope House if that's where we're planning on putting the people in respite beds? Why are they not being funded? Why are we making an extra shelter that is not needed since you have all the Hope Women out on the streets now, and they're sitting out there camping? Most of them are too mentally ill and too complex, like me, to get into this new shelter system. And even if we put them in there, they wouldn't stay because they've been at the Hope House since the day it started. I was bed 25 the first week of the Hope House. I am bed 25. I represent bed 25. I've been using it since it started. It is the only place that does not turn me away because of my complexities. I am a very complex situation. I've been through a lot out on the streets. I have seen nonstop violence my whole life. My whole life. It started with my mom. And so that is the place I feel safe. It is the place where there is security. And us girls made it that way. We fought really hard for it. And to see you guys make a choice and take it from us is devastating. And you will have people that do kill themselves over it because they are not able to cope.
Thank you, Sunshine. Your time is up. I saw Wendy actually left the building. Larry? And then Monica? Tittle? And then Eugene Knowles?
My name's Larry Andrews. I live in District One and have a business in District One. Thanks for listening to me, comrades. But as I walked down here today, I want you to see what I observed. And, and the problem that I see is, it's such a waste of life, okay? I crossed the street, the first street from the parking lot down there across from the Opera House. And I stayed and waited for the light to change, and I walked across the street. The next street I crossed is kind of not really a street. And lo and behold, I see a whole bunch of teenage girls over there, and they're all passing around pot. And they're smoking it. Each one of them's taking a drag off it, and they're moving it around and around and around. And the next thing is, is there's a guy that comes up with the bicycle. And guess what he does? He hands him a little white package. And the next thing I know, I watched him there for about 10 minutes. And the girl takes something and sticks it up her nose. And the next thing she knows, she's laying on the ground, okay? And what am I to do here, you know? Because it's right out in the front of our beautiful city streets here. And these people are using right here. And then the next guy that comes up, he's the John. And another guy grabs the girl, and you know what's going on. It's, it's so flat, and it's so much out in front of us. And it shouldn't be that way. These girls, they must have been 13, maybe 15 years old. And what a waste of life. It's a crime. It's a crime for us to continue to let it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Monica? And after Monica, Eugene? And then if Barbara is still in the house?
Hi, how's everyone tonight?
Good.
And I agree that we definitely need to have a central task, task force involved in this new homeless action, because so far, nothing's working. We've shut down all, pretty much all the shelters. That's pushed all the homeless people into downtown. Businesses don't like it. They're being tormented. People are being assaulted. The violence has gone up exponentially in this city. I'm afraid to go anywhere in town now. And I love downtown. I used to spend a lot of time at Riverfront Park, back when you could actually lay in the grass and have a good time and enjoy it. And so we do need a centralized task force to help delegate things that need to be done, because a shelter here, well, a counseling slash shelter group over here that will only let certain people in is not working. There are people that really want off the street, and we are working our butts to get off the street. I'm homeless right now, and I can't get housing. And I've been there for three months now, almost four. And it's ridiculous. I don't know what else to do. But we need to put more money towards actually putting people into housing and develop more housing. And then we need that task force. And I'd be more than happy to tell you all a few people to not use and a few people to use. But I thank you for your time, and I hope you all have a good night.
Thank you, Monica. Eugene?
Eugene Knowles has been living here in Spokane since 2010. Yeah, I usually try to catch a wave on something that's going on from the other speakers. And there was a lot tonight. In fact, there was so much that I got a little confused about what I was going to say. But as you know, I've been using my color-coded system, the blue-green and the red, which is the city on fire. And I was glad to see Mr. Altmeier here. I stayed in his shelter back in 2015. So the single point I'll make now is, because someone, I mentioned my numbers along with the color-coded, and you go from zero, which is not too many problems, down to number nine, which is the fentanyl thing. That's the death area. But I mentioned number five. Spokane, until it gets number five, what it did, number six is a temporary overflow shelter. That was track shelter. That was a disaster. $16 million. You could have built a nice number five with $16 million.
Thank you, Eugene. Is Barbara Woodrich still in the house? I do not see her. That concludes our open forum. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second?
It's been moved to second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? We are adjourned. Remember, next week, we will be at the Martin Luther King Junior Center for our open forum, District Two.